And I also noticed in the finance committee that we had a big item that we weren't quite sure with, the three of us, we could always bring it to the full board.
My observation of how we do things here is I like our system, I think it makes sense. I do think that we do not have the time or the ability in 30 minutes at the committee level to dig deep and fully understand and be able to have debate and discussion if there is a topic on our agenda that is either going to be controversial or that requires additional. And so my only ask would be that we encourage our administrative leaders to connect with our, the chairpersons of those committees if and when those times occur or there'll be some communication and that we'd be willing, if there's a big ticket item and like how we need to discuss this, or if Brent really thinks Matt's not going to like this, then maybe we just communicate that that committee starts earlier and we schedule, we allow more time so that, because the reality is, there are times, we look at the clock all the time like, hey, how much time do we have left? Oh, we still have to do, you know, the vouchers. And if we're going to do, if we're going to take the time to have committees to do the work, then let's have the time to be complete and thorough in what we're doing, and I'm not sure that that's the case. Now, there may be other times where it's like, hey, we're going to bang through this in 10 minutes, okay, fine, but I don't necessarily think that applies on a regular basis from a personnel committee standpoint. If there really wants to be some discussion over whether this is a worthwhile position for the district, but I think those are decisions, I trust the committee's recommendation that they come to the board with that really impacts what my vote is. And, but if it's a contentious issue to know that you have five minutes to discuss it and can get different opinions or information at that point, just think, we need to give these topics the amount of time that they deserve. And I would leave that up to the committee chairperson who's chairman of personnel.
Well, we have done that in the past, where we've had larger agendas on personnel, where we've, you know, started earlier, so that's, I guess that would be almost met when the president and me for agenda, we could have always factored in, if you feel it, yeah, 15 minutes, 20 minutes.
And in regards to the curriculum standards, I haven't attended one of those because it's not convenient for me. If that meeting started at, I don't know how long one normally takes, but if it was at 4:00, 4:30 today, I would have been here at it and been able to participate, but it's difficult to go inside of it.
Yeah, well, that's good to know. I think this too also, it's just something to think about, I suggested also, because I feel it's always worked and I think we've always felt competent in the people that we have in place in each committee, you know? Some people felt that they weren't getting enough information, but at any meeting at any time, you could always, you know, ask and, and I think that's what you're looking for. So my only other suggestion was is when we vote a reelection and board members, that we can decide what we want to do then.
On April?
Yeah. Come back in April and just, yeah, I think, and it sounds like that it, we will keep it the same.
Can we move curriculum standards to this?
And we will have to discuss, right, Dane?
Or you would prefer this?
Do you want to talk to Julie and see if they bring it up in our next curriculum?
We can bring it up at our next curriculum standards meeting. Again, I think originally this came to our attention because you were moving your board meetings back to 6 o'clock, which would require your committee meetings to start at 5:30. It's obviously much earlier than before. So it was, can we get rid of the committee meetings and just include it as a part of your overall board meeting? It's really your choice, but again, we tend to believe that the way things are going right now, it certainly works for us as a group of administrators, it's really up to you.
I would like to know, I guess, from the those that have been on the board for quite some time, that they have similar functions or are already inserted into the regular scheduled meeting. Did it work then? Was it more time consuming?
It was, it was longer.
Oh, yeah, one through a class.
Anyway, did you, what do you want?
There were, there were a lot of them.
Because it was all incorporated to one, is what you feel?
Well, then also, just as I, just reestablished from the school, that was.
There's some of the people on the board too that just, they want to go home, but it's hard.
Mike, you're home?
Yeah. I've been out here for, well, it's, which means that, that's all I knew.
Right, that's all I said.
And I've been, you know.
You were on previous.
Previous, yeah, and it was always set up this way.
I'm not sure when they, when they put that in, you know?
It was.
Mike would know.
Probably 20 years ago.
What have you seen in other districts? Have you, what have you seen that's most advantageous?
This, again, committee meetings, sometimes they don't always meet. I think this is the first one that I've been a part of where the committees actually meet the same night as the board meetings, opposed to meeting on opposite Mondays, so you have a little bit more time. But when the actual board meeting occurs, Jessica, it's the idea that two or three members are going to share, you know, what took place and they're going to have a recommendation. Well, certainly, some boards even run that as a consent item. In other words, it's a consent committee, we're going to share with you what's happened and there's approval of the consent agenda unless somebody chooses to remove an item from the consent agenda. That even expedites it to a greater degree. But that takes a tremendous sense of trust of the full board with the other members of the board. It's, this is what I've seen in most boards, trusting each other.
Cecil Dan goes there.
Yes. And the sessions that Dane and I have gone to, they do have, which I think is more time consuming, like you said, John, where they'll meet another night. They'll meet like a night before and then they'll come to the full board. I like the way we have it, so I wouldn't suggest another night or something, I don't think they needed that.
And one of the nice things, I mean, you can rotate these, but what I've seen in some districts is that if you've been on finance for quite a while and you continue to be elected to the board, that person stays with finance because there's a sense of expertise there. If you've been a part of building a branch, you began to build that institutional memory. Jessica, you've been a part of personnel, you continue to be on personnel because you continue to have the experience. And so board members often stay with those same committees year after year after year.
When I first come on the board, I was elected chairman and he would give me a container with all the bills from the bunch and you'd go through them and it'd take you a day. I got to learn the Fun 10 and I forgot to.
You could have that opportunity again, Mike, if you want.
You still have the containers, huh?
And I'd tell them there was checks in there that they should pull. But it was very time consuming and, of course, we didn't have the finance structure we have today.
We've got computers now.
Yeah.
That's a good Moore story, Mike.
All right, I'll make the motion that we bring, or do we need to vote on it?
We'll have to change it.
Or you just need the two, I guess. Yeah.
Put it on the table. Okay. Any other discussion? Three will move on. Item 10, new business. Item 10A, discussion of possible decision approval of 2018-20's calendar, which allows the person who's ever had options.
Well, again, knowing that we were pretty much interested to bring some type of recommendation to the board in January, where typically a rule isn't been approved, we decided about a month and a half ago to involve, first of all, the administrators in terms of what was good, what was bad about our current calendar, and then we wanted to get the staff involved. And so ultimately, you ended up with four options that were put together by the administrators and the teachers. Eventually, these options were then taken to the staff. There were a meeting or two, I'm not quite sure how each of them did it, but staff had a chance to look at each of these options, to think about them, but ultimately, they were asked to come in and to basically vote, share their preference for which of the calendars made sense to them. In terms of the commonalities, all the calendars, 1, 2, 3, and 4, all of those calendars had your staff working the same number of days that they're currently working. It's a 190-day calendar, so in no way does this reduce the number of days that staff are working. The biggest change is that in options 2, 3, and 4, you're seeing a reduction in the number of days that students are in the district, called the student days, and that's rather common. A few years ago, the state said you don't have to have a minimum of 180 days, what you do have to have is a minimum number of hours. And for all kinds of reasons, districts began looking at how they might do something, in some cases with busing. Other districts like ours began to look at this in terms of what might be, might we be able to do in the area of professional development? And so in most of these calendars, options 2, 3, and 4, when you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see 180 student days, 190 staff days. At calendars 2, 3, and 4, I think you'll see 175 student days, 190 staff days. Each of those last three calendars, again, have the staff working the same amount of time, but five less days for students being here. Those additional five days have now been put in the area of professional development. I know Julie has, there's a medical situation going on, she cannot be here tonight, but she would talk to you about the importance of getting that additional professional development time. I think some of our building administrators are here and they could share with you how that time could be used in a more productive way. The biggest change perhaps is when you take a look at where the calendars are, calendar 2, well, calendar 1 is almost a carbon copy of what we have right now. So if you wanted to replicate what's happening this year, calendar 1 would be the one to choose from, 180 student days, 190 staff days. Calendar 2 maintains winter and spring breaks as we have them. It also gives us ten in-service days, but it gives us additional 10 days for training and professional development. But once again, you see the school going out through June 4th, the last student days on June 3rd. Option number three, again, it maintains the winter and spring breaks as we currently experience them, gives the time off for Christmas, the time off for spring break in March. It creates 10 more in-service days. The cons on this one is there's no prep time for summer school. The last days on Friday, June 5th, summer school starts on Monday, June 6th. Depending on how you want to look at this, one of the things we were asked to do was to put together a calendar that in addition to the regular spring break and the regular winter break, also created a full week off for Thanksgiving. So that's the big change. If you look at calendar number three, you'll see that there's a solid, beginning of November, and there's a solid five days off for Thanksgiving vacation. The last calendar is the one that if you go to the very end, you'll see that percentage wise, or the number of people, calendar 4 seemed to have the greatest level of support from the staff. Once again, this is the one that maintains the winter and the spring break with five less student days. There's 10 in-service days versus the six which we currently have, but it creates the days for bringing the staff in for additional training, professional development, and there was a strong belief that having school in as early as we did, certainly students could start appointment on June 1st. It allows a break for summer school, it allows students to have a short break between the end and the start of summer school. The downside on that last calendar, the thing that's a little different before, I would say historically, you had Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday off for Thanksgiving vacation. In calendar number four, you've got Thursday and Friday off. So we debated that. Is this going to make a huge imposition for families by only having two days off? And again, I think the principals can probably speak to this, but reality wise, we believe, the parents really believe that Wednesday's important, they're going to call their kids anyway. Nobody's going to stay here, even if it's a school day, they're going to take their kids and they're going to go. So in any case, when this finally went back, and again, I'm going to certainly create an opportunity for the principals that are here, if you want to share beyond simply the numbers, the thoughts that are out there amongst the staff. On the very last page, you can see that there was strong support going for the 175 student days. Again, that's not less days of work for teachers. Teachers are going to be here 190. It simply means that they'll be here five days working on curriculum professional development as opposed to face-to-face instruction. And we have certainly more than enough minutes, Brent could probably address this, but again, we need 1,050 minutes at the elementary level, I think it's 11:27 at the middle school and the high school, we certainly exceed that. So we're meeting DPI guidelines and beyond in terms of the number of minutes. The staff would ask you to consider the last calendar. This would be somewhat different than before when we talked about this, when I was sharing this with the board. I know there are parents out there that are stressed to try to have calendars for two years in advance. In other words, could we not just do one year and two years? At this stage of the game, we're coming to you with one year, and if it is significantly different than what we've done in the past, at least I think what was shared with me by the board members that I talked with was, let's not go with two years if this is something significantly different, let's go with one year, see how it works, and then we're in better position to decide if that's the type of calendar that we want to continue with the future. It's really, each, and I would simply say this, I think the principals did a good job of sharing with their staff, this really is a poor decision from all your input, but ultimately, the board are in charge deciding which calendar you want.
Maybe you can speak to this, Josh. I use my personal experience, if my kids don't go to school, but you call it the week of Thanksgiving, I call it deer hunting, right? So I'm wondering, what does the attendance look like in your school when you have school days during that week?
That was a factor that we discussed in 14, and over the last four or five years, that attendance hasn't really changed. We talked to people how it used to be, you know, half the school would be gone, that we, we're lucky if we get four or five kids in the middle school, something good that give us a sheet that says they're going to be gone for those two days. It just isn't a major impact of kids leaving school to go hunting for that Thanksgiving week.
I feel like I'm in the minority now, Josh.
You are.
But what does the high school show, do you know any answer to that?
And Nathan, and Scott, it's pretty much the same.
Yeah, I would say, I would probably estimate 10 to 12, those pre-arranged for the week, so.
Okay.
Out of 650.
What about snow days?
Yep.
Well, again, when we look at the hours, I think we would indicate that you would allow the first two or three, Brent, to, we wouldn't have to make those up, but anything beyond, I think it's three. We would then have to have the staff make those up. And that's typically what you've done in the past. I think you've had three days built in that the hours would allow us not to have to make those up. Beyond that.
What does snow look like?
We don't live in a snowbowl.
So then we are not changing our snowy policy then?
No.
These calendars?
Because we still have to beat those same old rules.
Okay. Okay.
Motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion if we go to the line behind the floor, calendar 4.
Okay. Wait for the motion play mark in a second by Kelly for the discussion. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will hear.
Thanks, John.
Okay, item 10B, discussion of possible decision approval of the open enrollment resolution. Again, that's in everybody's packet, and this is something you approve every year, correct?
Absolutely, and again, I mean, it speaks for itself, we do need to have a resolution. We are not recommending that there be any limit placed on open enrollment applications for either regular ed or special ed. Again, I don't want to read to you, but for the audience, the reason we don't recommend limiting the availability of open enrollment is because we have not had an issue with open enrollment. Now, some of you might say, well, what about those kids that come in and they have to provide for this and we provide for that? The reality is that when we go back and perhaps Mary can address this if you have more questions, these aren't necessarily kids that are coming in and enrolling enrollment. They're kids that already live here or parents that do live in the district. And yeah, we do have to provide for those students and make sure that whatever they need, sometimes it can be expensive, but it's not necessarily the open enrollment kids that are causing that. It's students that are already a part of our district and they're entitled to a fair and appropriate education, and as residents, we have to make sure that it happens. So this is pretty much the same resolution that you had a year ago, but certainly, two of our principals are here, Julie's not here, I can speak with her, Mary's here, where we can address special ed issues. Bottom line is, every district in the state has to make a decision during the month of January versus open enrollment. This is the same type of resolution you had a year ago.
I would also move, as per the state of Wisconsin statute 118, print 5, or 51, print something, 521 requirement.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mike in a second, by Mark, discussion.
Yes. Do, does, with approving this as written with no restrictions, does the school district have the opportunity, when a special needs student or a student that requires us to hire a one-on-one or is going to cost us well in excess of what a normal student costs, does our district have the ability to say, no, you're not going to open enrollment in our district because the district here?
Not automatically, but I'm going to let Mary respond under the following conditions, we might say no.
Sure, so what happens is when we have an open enrolled student that comes in with an IEP, it's given to me and.
Maybe, it's hard to hear for some of the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Want me to stand up?
Yeah. You can come sit in front of the chair if you want.
Oh, yeah. When we have a student that comes in with an open enrolled IEP, it comes to me and I go through it with a fine-tooth comb and I look to see if we have the staffing and if we have the space. I will tell you that there, is it three, Brent, this year that we, I think it was three kids this year that we denied the open enrollment because we had to hire more staffing. So we have a process that Denise is our secretary for open enrollment and myself and Brent go through the three of us each time we get one in.
Well, you have very succinctly addressed my concerns, so I have no other questions.
I have one, Mary. Have we, have we done that before? Have we denied, or is this unusual?
We, we have, we did last year, I think it was one we denied.
Because we usually don't, do we?
If it's a special ed student that has needs that we cannot meet as far as space or staffing, we are able to deny it. And there haven't been a lot, but we've been doing it more just because we've gotten more.
Okay, because didn't we, then didn't we bus on them to someplace if we didn't have the facilities?
Oh, right now, we have one child that has deaf and hard of hearing, DHH services up in Wausau. Is that the one, is that what you're referring to?
Well, I just knew at some point we did some busing.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that for a kid that wants to open enroll in.
Oh, that's true.
There are, there are child.
That's for a child in the district.
There are child.
So are we saying that we do not have any children that are from outside of the district that come here and who buses them? Do we do, or is it the responsibility of the school district in which they reside?
That's a good question. So it depends on the IEP, some will have transportation on them when they come and some don't, but if they do come with transportation from their previous district, we have to provide the transportation. Some of them will come in without transportation and that's not a concern.
Hold on, now, backup, I'll give you a hypothetical. I live in Wausau.
Sure.
I decide, I don't want to go to Wausau West. My, my child, I don't want my child to go to Wausau West, they have an IEP and it requires transportation, like you just said.
Okay.
Then them open enrolling, we, to Mozenee, we accept them, then we have to provide financially for the transportation from them.
That is, why should we foot the bill?
It's, it's just the way, we have to follow the IEP the way it's written, and so when we go to look at the IEP, we have to look at how it is written that comes to us, and so we are required to do that.
But if we accept the child, what does it count to if it's going to be at a detriment of the district?
Yeah.
Physically.
Technically, technically, a transportation isn't a detriment, but if we had to hire a teacher, they look at space and staffing and space is the big issue. And Brent, chime in anytime you want, but.
I'm agreeing with her.
Yep, yep. But yes, transportation, we do have to provide if it's on their IEP when it comes to us.
So the policy, the policy is 3113, has open enrollment program inter-district, and it has, I'll call it, commissions, has those issue limited criteria, not only just for special needs, but I'll call it general population.
Okay.
If I'm completely correct there. Either way, so in the very end of our, our policy, it says, the board shall review its open enrollment program annually. What does this, what does this resolution do and complement our policy? Or does it, but honestly, I don't think it does that, I think it contradicts it.
Well, the resolution has to be something where you as a board and every other board in the state have to make a decision in terms of what's happening. And then Denise is in the process rather quickly, once we have this done, publishing our, in our open enrollment statement, I'll give it Mozenee times, it'll go out on our website, so the parents know what the open enrollment policies are, or the Mozenee school district, just like every other school district, is making that decision. So in a sense, you need your own policies, whether, hopefully it's not contradicting it, but it's basically following whatever the guidelines are, which is in the own policy, which most districts have.
Right.
But again, the best I can tell you is that because you don't have space issues right now.
Right.
Either in special ed or in your regular classrooms, you have to be able to make a case as to why you'd be limiting enrollment. And we don't have that situation right now. But Matt's question, starting back there, this issue, do we have to basically accept a student, open enrolling in, if that student's going to cost us lots of money? The answer is probably not. I can't say absolutely, but in most cases, the answer is, we would look at that IEP and it's being asked of us, and we would probably say no.
And, and right now, we have over 300 special ed kids in the district, there's 19 that are open enrolled, and there's only two that I'm aware of that we pay transportation for.
And this is a state statute.
I get that. There's criteria in our policy, and I just wanted to know if we're going to, if we just approve this, is the criteria still in the file or not? That's my question.
Yes. Yeah, they seem to be two different items.
Right. I get where you're coming from.
There are two different items now. Does one take precedence or does one complement the other? That's the question.
The state statute has to take precedent, but our board policies certainly shouldn't be. And they should not be recommending that we basically pass policies that are not in compliance with the statutes that have to be passed as a part of those open enrollment process.
Okay. I'm also concerned with the wording of the open enrollment resolution because I understand space is the priority, but we're also saying that resources is a component of that as well, so why is that not listed, meaning the staffing? I mean, just to make sure that people know that it's not just about the space, but it's about the resources that come along with that.
Again, I'm simply taking the resolution as you used in the past.
Right, right. But that's what I'm saying is maybe we need to.
It's certainly a concern in terms of basically wrong people in, Jessica, it's not just the space, but as, I don't think you have an issue in terms of, your regular ed, in most cases, what you want is open enrollment, and that's, that's the rubbing stream that many districts are looking for.
Sure.
Need to say it, but obviously, when it comes to special needs populations, sometimes it can be expensive. And that's where Mary has to sit down with Brent and look at their situation and make a case-by-case determination, as you said, Jessica, not just on space, but also on the resources.
But that's why I don't want to limit us. I think we need to look at the verge on this a little bit closer. I don't want to say just because it's what we had last year that this is good to go.
Well, we are able to restrict kids from coming in, Jessica, if we don't have space and we don't have the staffing. You do get a higher funding for special ed kids than you do regular ed kids.
I'm just saying, I want that to be on the paper then, so that it's.
I'm not sure, to be honest, I'm not sure that we can put that as a part of the resolution. What you're basically saying is, we will not limit the number of open enrollment students for either regular ed or special ed, as is there is sufficient space for incoming students. Space is really the issue, but at the same time, when it comes to the special needs population, I think that's where you have to hopefully trust that Mary and Brent are not just looking at space, but they're looking at resources, because we know that, we've had this conversation before, there are many times when we find ourselves saying no to things that need to happen in regular ed, that the resources just aren't there for some of the Fun 10 requests. And if you're a regular ed educator and you're sitting out there and you're being told no on this or no on that, and yet you see us bringing in special needs students, spending the money in that area, and you hear me talk to the board. the money in that area, and you hear me talk to the boards, I've done it in the board connections at the end of the year, that were transferring close to three million dollars out of Fund 10 to Fund 27. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that teachers are wondering, man, what are you guys doing out there? Why would you let these students come in if it's taking resources away from Fund 10?
So what it does is it opens up, quite honestly, a public knowledge that we'll accept applications, but it still goes through the criteria of the policy. Is that correct?
The criteria.
And you don't have, when you look at the balance, I think it's nineteen and twenty. It isn't like we have a, a ton of kids coming in and we have basically the same number of kids leaving that come in. So it's not like you're, I mean, if we had hundred trying to, coming in and ten leaving, then I'd say you'd have a concern, but basically you guys are in a quid pro quo. Uh, I mean, you're basically equal.
The trend is, the trend is like...
And last year was similar.
Yeah, the trend has been pretty much the same, I would say.
Pretty much, this many leave has come, so...
If, if that trend started to shift, then this would be more concern to us. The other element here is class size. We haven't really talked about that constraint, but I mean, that could be an issue too, especially if you bring in ten students at a given level. How do you, how do you handle that, right? That could be an issue for us.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Jessica, I'd be, I'd be careful about stating certain things because of discrimination.
Well, we can't, we can't deny a disability type, we have to just deny...
I'm saying if this is a liability, if you're not clearly articulate in those things, that's what I'm saying.
Like where it says sufficient space, I think you're thinking sufficient space and resources.
Correct.
Is kind of what you're looking for, but I don't think we can...
Say exactly.
I don't know that I've seen the and resources as a part of the resolution. Part of it is of what, we can't pick and choose between different programs and say, well, we don't have the resources here. It's typically space that is the guiding factor.
Right.
But that's why I wanted Mary to explain to you, when we sit down and take a look beyond space, what does it mean when we have special needs students open and rolling in, significantly different than when you've got special needs students that live within your own district. Their, whatever it takes, and it ought to be that way. They're taxpayers, we all agree. But I would like you to know that we've spent a lot of time talking about the importance that when we get people coming in from the outside, before we say yes, we need to consider what's the message we're sending to our regular classroom teachers when we say that, Jessica. You get it? You get it?
Further discussion? If not, we do a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Discussion. Item ten C, discussion of possible decision, agreement for the Mozenee youth baseball use of fields. These are, Brent, this is very similar to what we've always had, we're just renewing it.
Yeah, that basically would be pretty much parroting what I had for the MCA fields. And I showed it to the president of Mozenee Youth Baseball and he said it looked good to him, so it looked good for the MCA, so I think you've got what you need, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Matt and a second by Jessica. Further discussions?
Yep. My question is, is remember the gentleman who lived across the street on that parking lot?
He started, yeah.
And he was complaining about the dust?
Yeah. Brent said it's good.
Whatever happened with him?
Um, I've tried putting a call into him a few times, um, actually two or three times, and it was just, it was very difficult to explain the situation because at the time, it was just really busy. There's a lot of traffic going on and it was youth. You know, he was, he's just not happy that those fields are there, period. Um, but the youth has been doing such a great, you know, where do you start with all these parents that you no longer drive them?
Well, yeah. Well, you can't. I'm just wondering, we don't need to add anything under obligations of the district as far as...
No, because when I even contacted the city about trying to watch the roads and everything, like they were really, they understood, they heard it. Um, so, you know, just talking to Brent and I made a couple of different phone calls. It does, it sounds like it's, the problem's been there for some time.
He wishes the, I mean, an end, he wishes the facility to be gone and the trees be back.
Or just build a dome.
But, but I mean, that's really, in essence, the only way, Amy, that we could really make him happy. And I mean, literally, you can't do that. I mean, it's just plant trees and let it all go back to the wild, because that's the way it was when he got there. And he just doesn't like all the development and all the traffic and all the kids running around.
That was the only answer I gave.
And the dirt driveway, you know, that you got before, it was nicer. I mean, I get it from his perspective, but you can't get rid of baseball fields.
Right, right.
I'd also just like to clarify with Brent, we had talked and this is a ten-year contract, but we have pretty much, um, not, I guess, locked ourselves into anything if you need it, so.
I mean, I think, I mean, basically, if you have an out clause, if you wanted, you could buy the, the improvements that they've made and boot them, but I think politically you, it would be kind of not a good idea unless something really, really changed situationally for the district and we ended up with a Toyota plant or something like that.
Further discussion?
Yes, the insurance, Brent, explain that to me.
Basically, they'll have insurance on their property and they don't have the concern with the property insurance like they do with the MCA, because remember, we're furnishing the insurance because of the turf field on the property. You know, their facilities, they've had property insurance on their improvements and stuff. So basically, they'll be, having all the insurance, just like they have the last thirty years.
But they, Mozenee named, uh, uh, Mozenee...
Yeah, so like if there was a liability claim, because we own the land, that their policy would protect us. Knock on wood, we've never had an issue with Mozenee Youth Baseball in the time I've been here where we've had a claim or anybody's even approached the school. Because in essence, I mean, we don't really do anything with it other than be a benevolent landlord that lets them put up batting cage. They don't call you up and say, do you care if we put up a batting cage? They just put it up and poured the concrete and there it is. So I mean, in essence, we've given them the land in most every respect because they don't have to ask for anything there.
But what is the dollar amount?
Of what?
Insurance.
That I do not know. I don't have the new insurance certificate from them, um, but I will have one and can tell you what they insured it for. I was, I, I don't know what their property value would be, Mike.
Would you, uh, give us an update maybe?
Oh, sure. I can tell you when I get the, the certificate, the new certificate from Mozenee Youth Baseball, what they have it insured for. But the other thing I would tell you is they're dealing, like, I'm pretty, well, I'm pretty sure they're dealing with Compass Insurance, but I'm sure they've got adequate coverage because, you know, the agent, you know, is very interested in sports, you know, John is, and they want to do right by them, you know, they wouldn't want them underinsured. But again, if they're underinsured, Mike, you know, that really isn't our issue because if they say, I want to insure this for X, you know, we don't decide what they have for coverage. They don't have to ask me. So I mean, pretty much, I show it to you, but it's not really our, our call on what they want for a liability policy or what they want for property coverage or, you know, any of that.
Usually when they sue, they usually name everybody by their name.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the good thing is you have liability insurance as a school district, so you're in good shape. And, uh, you know, I guess how they do things, I can show you, but, you know, if we didn't like something, you know, it'd kind of be, oh, you know, you've really got a lot to say about it.
All right, any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Um, next area of discussion, quarterly update on student disciplinary issues.
We were asked to come before the board and talk a little bit about pre-expulsion and advanced issues. I'm sure in history, I think for many, many years, you had districts throughout the state who followed a zero tolerance policy. Students were found guilty of doing something, pretty much, when it was serious enough, the student was expelled. We weren't really looking at whether that was in the best interest of the student academically. We were simply saying, we're going to make an example of that student and hopefully other students will look at what happened to that student and will serve as a reminder that the rest of you better not do the same thing or you're also looking for that. The thought began to change and Department of Public Instruction throughout the country, again, talking to us about the fact that there seems to be a definite connection between lower achievement levels, lower grade points, lower morale in schools. When you had zero tolerance policies, they just didn't seem to do what people were hoping to be able to do. And they asked us to begin looking at a pre-expulsion or advanced policies where, under certain circumstances and certain conditions, we would look at, were there academic modifications that could be made? Were there curriculum changes that could be made? Were there some things that could be done differently that might allow the student maybe to be out for a short period of time, but not necessarily have to be expelled for weeks or months or permanently? Was there a way that that student could continue to be a part of our school district under certain circumstances? In April of two thousand and eighteen, this board passed a pre-expulsion, advanced policies. So we're here tonight, again, to my knowledge, it hasn't been used really long at Josh or, you know, usually it's not at the elementary school, but perhaps you could speak up half the high school and middle school.
Yeah, well, Scott's here too, but, um, since the, the policy was, was approved by the school board, we have not had, we've not brought it forward for, um, a pre-expulsion. I don't believe we've had an expulsion hearing this school.
Correct, yeah. We ran some...
Which is a good thing.
Ran some numbers this, uh, at this point last year in the first semester, we had nine events or nine students that were eligible for expulsion. Um, and this year, we haven't had any, or pre-expulsion, so...
With that, Scott, so there has to be some issues, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So how many issues have there been that we haven't had to see as?
So, um, while we haven't had any that would have gone to the school board, even if we didn't have a pre-expulsion policy, and our non, our, just our discipline referrals at the high school are down twenty-six percent at this point over last year, and our suspensions are over half, cut in half, so... But it's just, you know, we've been doing some different things with PBIS and some other things at the school and it's, it's been working, so...
So do we no longer have your zero tolerance drug policies?
Correct.
Right?
Well, I mean, to understand this, Jessica, the issue was our board was not comfortable with having, um, in certain circumstances, some of which being drugs, uh, I think the kid that's got a syringe and heroin in school, we're going to see him, but the kid that's got a small amount of marijuana, the idea that we were going to expel them, um, after looking at the frequency and the types of information we were receiving last year, ultimately what we decided was, we ended up negotiating as a board in expulsion hearings, I don't quote any details on those, but we ended up negotiating the equivalent of a settlement that we're comfortable with and we think's in the best interest of the student as well as the school. And we went to the staff and said, why don't you guys do this before you come to us? And they're like, you didn't give us permission to do that. And we're like, okay, now you have permission to do that. So that's the situation and the, of the authority that this, uh, this board has given to our principals.
It's also a procedure that has been in place and...
Well, I guess the procedure hasn't been in place, but to reassure you, if the, if your board policy is being followed, it should be. You know, if Scott and I or Josh or Jack, if we had some type of pre-expulsion, advance, where we agreed to a certain level of behavior and allow the student to stay, you would have to be aware of that and Mary used to, would be in a closed session because we wouldn't be revealing names. But it's, it's not like you can continue to have a bunch of these and the board would not be aware of it.
Right.
First time it happens, we have to come to you and let you know that this is our intended purpose and, uh...
That was, that was the criteria that this board established for the use of the pre-expulsion.
Exactly.
So what I'm hearing from Scott is there isn't any issues that we can have?
Correct, yes.
Even in the past, Jessica, there wasn't necessarily a zero tolerance policy that if you had, like, a marijuana pipe was found in your locker, that you're getting expelled. You get suspended for sure. It's happening for, for those things, but there was, that wouldn't come to expulsion. Now, if it's a larger issue like intent to sell or you have a larger amount of something, then yeah, those things always came for expulsion, so...
I don't, I don't mean to disagree with you publicly, but I can tell you, I sat through expulsion hearings where the kid had a little bit of dull.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was hard and fast.
And, and they came to expulsion, so...
Yeah, but was it easy with intent to sell?
The point you're making is, was my position, which was, I don't want to see the kid with a marijuana pipe coming to us on a special board meeting to expel him when I have no interest in expelling a kid that's got a marijuana pipe.
Well, your policy has now given the administration discretion and it sounds like that's something you want us to really take a look at. Are there other ways to keep that student in our district, in the school, and still feel like the rest of the students? In other words, we're not getting rid of kids as an example for the other kids. We're looking at every student individually and what's in their best interest.
That's not going to expel them and they might have, say, seeing the light and go the other way. So keep them in school, they used to have a...
It's policy fifty-six oh nine, if you want to reference it, but it clearly states that something like this would happen as soon as the next board meeting occurs. You will have to be aware of what the administration did. Fifty-six oh nine.
I appreciate the quarterly update though, because we're learning great knowledge. That's what we're going to learn.
Well, I would like to congratulate the staff on, it's the same kids you had last year, really. I mean, minus those percentage of them. And I think there was numerous issues during the school year last year and I'm unaware of any of those issues continuing, so I would just like to say thank you for addressing those issues and continue to shoot for reduction.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the personnel committee, may you report? Jessica?
Item eleven A, discussion, current job vacancies in the district. I'm going to let Darlene handle this one as a lot seven, or a lot several to report on.
A lot has changed since I reported on this last Wednesday. Um, we offered a temporary occupational therapist. We had three of them apply. We interviewed two, we would have interviewed the third one, but she, she was back, you know. Um, we did offer that position last night to an employee or to somebody that had applied and, and Misses Mermet had interviewed with her team and she did accept this morning. So now she's going to go through the pre-employment, the drug test and the background check and we hope she, she actually made her appointment tomorrow morning already, so I think we're going to move really quickly with her and I'll probably have her start next week. This is the position that you guys moved at the last board meeting for one day per week. Um, secretary of the high school that was vacated by Bard Larr has been filled and Jackie Martin from the elementary school accepted that position. She is a parish secretary, so she does, it looks like she has a lot of experience. I looked at, um, all of the, um, you know, accounting, you have all kinds of things that she does for the church, so, um, she is looking forward to go over to the high school and she'll start next Monday. So we are now posting her special education teacher assistant at the elementary school. Um, we have the special education teacher assistant at the middle school that was vacated. Um, Sean Greshick did take that position, he accepted. So now we do, he was a temporary teacher assistant in our school, so now we will be posting that at the middle school. Um, the seven-hour-per-day teacher assistant at the elementary school, they interviewed three of them today. I understand one did not come or show up. They did, um, they are looking now at getting references, so I will know tomorrow who they wish to hire. Um, we did post for a weekend custodian yesterday. We just had one of our weekend custodians, um, leave employment here, he still wants to be a sub, and that position works one weekend per month. We did post our summer school teachers and substitute teachers, summer school assistants and, um, sub assistants, or, or teacher assistants and the summer school secretary. So we'll bring, um, those hires to you next month. What is it?
Okay. Item eleven Bravo, discussion of possible decision approval of temporary four K special education teacher hire. The personnel committee unanimously decided to fire Casey Nogian for the four K special ed position. This is a one-year temporary hire and Casey has been a substitute teacher in the district, And Casey has been a substitute teacher in the district, so very familiar with the IE piece. And we are looking for a motion to approve.
I make a motion.
Certainly.
Okay, with motion by Kevin and a second by Matt, further discussion. If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carry.
Well, item 11, Charlie, decision and possible discussion of possible decision approval of additional resignations, retirees and hires, and there are none to report on at this time.
Next month we will have some, because February 1st is the deadline for early retirees.
Item 11D, update, new extracurricular hires. We have two positions. So there is Caleb Uzakowski replacing Caleb Byrd for the middle school assistant girls basketball coach. She was placed in the C1 chart. According to her coaching experience, there are 23 girls and three teams for that position. Also, we have high school assistant girls track coach Kurt Vanenhooft replacing Darren Drebbett. Kurt has about 10 years of coaching experience, so he has put up a B3 tier. And there are 35 girls in the high school track teams. And we had no future agenda items for 11D. That concludes my personnel report.
Thank you. Item 12, finance committee report, Mike.
This evening at the finance committee meeting, a discussion of possible decision of the budget adjustment for the house purchase. We are taking some money out of 109 to 18, 110,000 and putting it into 10809, 531, 255,000 of 319,0500. And I would so move that we do this for the purchase of these two properties.
Okay, so a motion by Mike and a second by Mark, further discussion.
Will you take a ownership of those, excuse me? Are you, this is part of a resolution that we're discussing ourselves.
I would like this resolution presented.
If you look at your closure, I think it's, the notion that Mike is making is to approve the resolution, which becomes a transfer of the balance. This is something that we have to do, it's part of the law. This is, you've dotted all the I's and crossed all the T's in terms of directing Brent to make the purchases, in terms of getting the community to come to the public annual special meeting. There was a vote, the very last component of that is for you to pass a resolution transferring that money from one fund to another fund. And so the resolution, if you want somebody to read it, but it's, the resolution's in the...
Well, that's why I want you to take ownership of the house.
So just so that I'm clear, Mike, your motion is to approve the resolution as provided in our materials.
Words from the finance committee. And I would like that a roll call, yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Kewiss?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
All yes.
Okay, item D, is discussion and possible decision additional energy service projects. We are going to enter into three different projects. And tweeting here, it was the low bid for the first project of ceiling and air refusers for the high school band and story group, which we had all in our stump stored in while we were doing it. And the other project is the ceiling grid tile of each room. We got two bids and the low bid was 10,088 dollars. And the second project involves spraying insulation around the suspended ceiling where the wall meets the roof. And it takes, encompasses the middle school and the high school. We got two bids, one was 21,000, that's hybrid, 625. And the low bid was 19,500. I would so move for all the low bids in these three different projects.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have motion by Mike and a second by Mark, further discussion.
These can be done almost any time, all right?
Bill, more or less be done in the summer, because of the heat for the insulation.
Steve?
Can I answer that question for you? Actually, Mike, the insulation actually will happen at night. Because of the crews, they'll come in and do the spraying above the ceilings at night. And then the work in the band room would actually be happening during spring break. Because summer school's moving into the high school. And they need to get these areas cleared so they have more room.
The one question we had, Stephen, the one question we had in the finance committee about the form, how many feet is that area?
Well, I don't exactly know the footage. We walked the whole facility. The issue that comes into play as you walk through the buildings is as different years were done, there's some actually spots we can't get to that edge because it's all plastered, lath and plastered, so we can't get to that. But I would tell you pretty much the whole high school perimeter, that's 60, 65. Some parts in the 96th edition and then through the middle school, 96th section in the back. So it encompasses quite a, quite a rated building. And it's interesting, we did take the thermal cameras in there and took pictures of that. And you can really see, you know, taking a picture, you can see definitely that the heat transfer had changed. And that's just because that's how they did it years ago. They just tied these steel joists on top of block and they had a brick mirror on the outside and they just assumed that was gonna be fine. They didn't worry about infiltration and things of that nature. And that's what causes some of our problems. And even ones that just got completed that had a lot of exposure rim on the north side of the building. Trust me, those pictures, the purples could be along that water. It's unbelievable the difference in some of these areas. So we'd like to be able to encompass that and get that cleaned up. And that'll help us out a lot in those areas, so. That answers your question?
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, Mike, additional conversation we had regarding this is very similar to the comments I made regarding the rebate check of 100 and some odd thousand dollars. Is that these funds are being expended from, number one, it could be the money in that check or there's, all the projects up to date have come in under budget. There's an estimate, if all things go as planned, it will be about a million dollars under budget. And from a finance committee, we don't even know where we're paying for these things. But that money can only be used for projects such as this or to pay down the debt that overdrawed that money the first place.
I would so move to accept this.
Okay, so you have a second already too.
I do.
By Mark.
Can we have a roll call?
You bet. Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Kewiss?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
All yes.
And as well, the finance committee, the CD, January 15th, 2019, the culture list is for a grand total of 1,110,969.91. I would so move.
Certainly.
And that'll be a roll call, will it?
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Kewiss?
Yes.
All yes.
Okay, thank you. On the month ending December 31st, dated January 9th, 2019, for the treasurer's report, I as well would so move.
Certainly.
And that'll be a roll call, both, if there's no further discussion.
Maple?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Kewiss?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
All yes.
Okay, thank you. Item 13, WASP report. Oh, I'm sorry. In front of all of us who is going down to Milwaukee for the school board convention, Amy has our reservations and any other information we need. The other, Amy did bring up a good question as of when the events in that take place as far as, Amy, would you ask again?
Well, just in that, yeah, in our, when the session was. Yes, all of them classes were offered and we're supposed to pick.
Yes, when you were doing, right.
Four or five or whatever we wanted to go to.
In the time of, yes, yes. Each day there is different ones. As of right now?
They're all the same time.
They usually are. That is, so usually it's two that you want to go to at the same time.
You should be trying to split up, you know, between, if you're going to that one, I'll go to this one or...
And other than that, right now, I don't have anything else.
Okay, CS9?
We have a minutes of CS9. I see our finance director, they're clearly fed over at surgery. And he sent us some, and very, very easy incentive agenda as well. Posted right up here in the front. And I guess that'll be about it.
Okay, and Theo? Item 14, future agenda items.
I just want to bring policy on class size. The other one would be policy for tuition reimbursement of administrative staff.
Okay, item 15, moving into closed executive session. The board of going to close the executive session pursuant to sections 19.85, print one, print C of the Wisconsin statute for the purpose of promotion, compensation or performance evaluation of public employees. Section 19.85, print one, print C reads, considering employment, promotion or compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. So I would need a motion. Okay.
How's that?
We have a motion by Mike, a second by Kelly, roll call both, please. Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Kewiss?
Yes.
All yes. Okay, thank you. Take a short break and return. On Tuesday, January 15th at 6:01 PM, roll call directors, please. Barnes?
Here.
Baumann? Kewiss?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Tom Chek?
Zebra? Yes.
All present to Tom Chek. Okay, I have three pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item four, approval of the agenda.
I would so move.
Okay, I have a motion by Mike and a second by Kelly. Any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Item five, approval of the minutes by the regular board of education meeting from December 18th, 2018.
Make motion approved.
A second.
Here we have a motion by Mark and a second by Matt. Any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. And then again on item 5B, special annual board of education meeting from January 3rd, 2019. I'll make motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jessica and a second by Mark. Any questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed?
I abstain.
I couldn't agree.
I wasn't there either.
So are you abstaining as well? Okay. Did you catch all those AMs? Okay. Motion will carry. Item six, the public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board needed agenda. General hovering rule of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the board meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address and share with the board what agenda item you are speaking to the board on. Is there currently anybody that would like to speak to the board on anything on the agenda? I will ask again, is there anybody? And one more time. All right, we will move on. Item seven, special presentation, focus on energy. Mr. Steve Kaiser.
All right, thank you. First of all, I want you to focus to know, you know, in the maintenance department, we're gonna look at how our facilities operate and it's really based on how much energy we use. So we're always looking in ways to better improve our facilities. And in the last few years, we've done a lot of improvements and it's definitely showing in our electrical bills and our utility bills. But to make that happen, I have a really good team that helps me with that. So along, I have Dan Geenan, who is owner of line design or line design specialist. They help us do a lot of the design work and selecting the correct products. Dylan Phil's here from Nexus, he's our project manager. And he's helped us work through the construction projects, work with our contractors, making sure everything fits and goes like it's supposed to. And then again, we have Adam Stippen from Focus Energy. But I want to say it's really a cumulative effort of everybody's help because we look at the projects and see where we can fix what, what needs to be replaced. But in doing so, you have to really look at what kind of products are selected. Focus Energy has a listing of products that fall within a high energy usage or, you know, high energy efficiencies that I'm looking for, right? So we look if we can marry that and we've been able to select a lot of good pieces of equipment and light fixtures and controls that make that happen. But at the end of the day, really, we look at, it enhances our facilities. It helps us with all our energy usage and gives us much more control of our buildings. Because before, when I came, we didn't have much control of the buildings compared with available. And today, we can monitor every room, we can look at what's going on, we can schedule events. So we really move the ball forward in that light. But first I'd like to introduce Dan and have him speak about his company a little bit and his work with us.
I'm Dan Geenan, Lighting Design Solutions. I own the company. I'm a Wisconsin certified electrical designer and I'm nationally lighting certified. We work with the group to try to design a lighting system that fits what the school wants to do, save energy and capture as much savings and incentives as we can from Focus on Energy.
I'm Dylan Phil with Nexus Solutions, project manager. I've been working with Steve and his staff the past year here at the 2018 project and really happy how it turned out. They've been very helpful and great to work with. So we're looking forward to get the ball moving for 2019. We're at the elementary school and the middle school as well. And I know coming in under budget with the 2018 project's gonna allow us to look at some other projects down the line as well. I've been working with our development team, design team and looking at options where we can, you know, save some money for the district. And I've been working closely with Steve and Brent on some of those projects. I know he'll be presenting a couple of them tonight, you know, and there'll be some more down the road. So we look forward at those opportunities and appreciate you having me come out tonight. Thanks.
And like Dylan mentioned, we're walking into another section of work for this next summer. So at the elementary schools, they're gonna re, retrofit of the 75, 93 sections. We're gonna operate all those controls. It's gonna make a huge difference in that facility by far. As well, we're also gonna tackle a section of the 19.339 of the middle school. We just couldn't do all the work last summer, there's no way we're gonna get it done. But we're very pleased that our bids rolled out well and came in better than we thought, which is great. But also, the key component of this is finding the right piece of equipment. Because once you buy it, you have it, it's gonna run for a long period of time. And that just relates to what our energy costs are gonna be. Everybody knows budgets are budgets and trying to save the money where we can save it. But Adam, my partner at Focus Energy, we talk all the time and he's been excellent to work with. We've kind of recouped everything we could possibly pull out of this last project. So I think I do Dan Stippen, he's our Focus Energy rep.
Hi, I'm Adam. I got the opportunity to work with Steve quite a bit in the last year and a half, but he's been very active with our program ever since he came on here. And as far back as our records go, there's projects for the school district with their energy efficiency, you know, improving safety, comfort and sustainability of the school. So I'm happy to help him out. And one of the reasons he asked me to be here tonight was to present a large check. Basically summing all the incentives for energy efficiency projects that the school's done in the last year and a half.
Right, from June 2017 to current. So that wraps up all our products we purchased. It was pre-qualified and was selected and we knew they were gonna come into play.
Right, so, so he's, you know, I mean, the school district's been making a lot of good decisions as far as investing in quality equipment that's gonna save money on utility bills over the life of the equipment and, you know, make this school state of the art. So what, you know, I get an opportunity to work with a lot of different school districts. I work with the Focus Energy School, Ag and government program. And I represent Northern Wisconsin as an advisor and I get to work with, you know, with everyone up here. So Mozeny really stands out and this is proof of that because this is the largest check I've had a chance to write and be a part of.
Wow, cool.
Sure, yes.
I would really like to see a picture of our president and Steve and the check and you. Here you go.
Tony looks a little older than in that picture up there.
Yeah, there you go. Nice vacation.
Go on, let's see. You tell me, head over that side or the other.
Oh, there we go.
I thought you guys standing in the middle.
Well, it doesn't matter.
You earned it.
I don't wanna be shy.
I know, I tried to, I tried to put a digit there too, you wouldn't let me talk. There we go. And that sums up, but thanks for your support on all the projects. We really do appreciate it and help us move that ball forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've earned the money, guys, but stay close.
One, one point that I think is, is worth looking with that check or understanding based on discussing that those coming in the finance meeting is that money is available for use for additional energy efficiency projects or to pay down debt on the loan associated with all the energy efficiency projects we took. It's not money that goes into the general fund of the school district. Did I say that right, Brent? Thank you.
All right, moving on, technology update, Brady.
I was smart about this. I requested the goal before the group that just gave a hundred and seventy.
What do you got?
They follow that a lot.
You got a cribbage.
Uh, so this is my yearly update for you guys. Um, you know, you get a building update, you get a, a specialized apartment update, um, and you get a, a tech update. Um, I gave you a paper copy of it, um, if you prefer to use that, uh, to, to look on, otherwise it's up there. And again, my goal tonight is just to provide you kind of an update, a, a state of the state of our tech department and where things are. Um, obviously, our tech department is a little bit unique compared to, uh, most organizations that operate within the school because we marry really the two sides. We are a, a support organization. I have a staff of five, um, that is the break and fix, you know, things aren't working. And we're also marrying that to obviously the education side, um, with, uh, trying to support students and teachers in the classroom. This year, we have two very large goals that we lay out. We participate in the data retreat in August, just like the teams do, um, the, the team leaders from the three different buildings. Uh, this year, we laid out two goals. So Christie, myself, and then there are two tech coaches at each of our schools. The two goals this year, um, I'm very proud of the, the goals that the, that our group picked and I think it's been, um, a pretty successful, uh, undertaking so far. It's a very large undertaking. One is essentially summed up, number one is to provide students and parents with a larger digital citizenship layout. Uh, obviously, that is a very hot button issue, uh, around really the country right now with cyberbullying, um, keeping your kids safe online. Our group made the decision to try to be proactive rather than reactive with it. We are right now undertaking, uh, we're halfway through the year of sending out, uh, monthly updates through, um, our Facebook pages that each of the buildings have, um, and a comprehensive plan that goes out um, to basically notify students, notify parents of, um, you know, some of the, the big pieces that we're doing. The second big goal is, um, from our tech coaches, which is to try to have an influence and an impact in the classroom with students and teachers. So, uh, we call it our reach every teacher spreadsheet. Basically, we keep track, we're trying to, to be as, as data-driven as we possibly can um, with how many teachers our tech coaches have an impact on. Um, our goal is seventy-five percent of the teachers each semester. Um, and we are well on our way. You see on the, the bottom right corner, it says seventy-one percent of our teachers contacted this semester. Um, it's stuff that I'm pretty proud of our tech coaches for uh, because if you work in a large organization, um, you know, you get all different types of people, people that say, no, I'm fine, I don't need any help. Um, our tech coaches have been far more proactive on going and trying to find them and seek step out with them. A couple of updates on a few other large projects. We're kind of, uh, now to the point with the Fab Lab where we are fully operational. We have, um, just about eighty students that are taking classes in the Fab Lab right now, um, running through, uh, five different class sessions. We have two teachers, so Matt Lindsay and Christie Heckendorf Paul are the two primary instructors of that class. Christie Health and I do some help managing, you know, running it, grant writing, that kind of stuff, but we're not in there on the day-to-day. Uh, we've held some community nights. The most successful is, uh, man, cribbage is really popular. That's a, that's a big deal. So, uh, we brought an example just to give you an idea of, um, capabilities of some of the stuff that by far was one of the, the most popular community nights. We're definitely gonna bring that one back, um, back around because that encompasses a lot of pretty cool skills and, you know, people get to leave with a pretty cool tangible piece to it. So Fab Lab is operational, um, we're pretty much up and running at, at full strength right now. Um, up in the top right, I just give you an update on, um, every year, obviously, we've got a series of grants that, uh, that we go through. Um, this year, I think we've been very successful with, uh, with what we've gotten. We've got two grants, three really, if you include donations, that we've never gotten before. Um, uh, and I'll highlight the second one down, um, the WTI, the Wisconsin Technology Initiative. When I sent this out to Amy to send out to you guys on Thursday, um, you see it says on there, submitted for, for getting this. Um, and Christie must have done a really good job writing the grant because we found out yesterday that we, uh, we got a seventeen thousand dollar two, seventeen-two, um, grant that'll be coming across your plates in February for, uh, approval to purchase equipment. And it's a full hundred percent grant, so the district has no financial liability out there. So we're pretty excited about that.
I'm sorry, what is a milling machine?
Uh, so milling is a subtractive technology. You take blocks of something and it's a computerized program that you, uh, that you basically can mill away different layers of stuff and create objects out of it. So, we're like a three D printer is an additive, it creates something out of nothing. This, you take blocks and you would, you would take away layers. It's exactly, it's a modern day lathe. Yep, yep. So we're pretty excited about all of those things. We did also receive, um, you know, one of the big pushes of the Fab Lab is to try to get more community involvement. Um, we've been, I think, very aggressive of trying to bring organizations in. Last year, we had a group come in, um, the Society of Manufacturing Engineers from the area. And, uh, they just this year came back to us, came back to Darlene and said they would like to make a donation, um, back to the Fab Lab to try to support students that have a hard time, um, paying for projects, paying for the, the cost of being in the class. So we're pretty excited about that. A thousand dollar grant to essentially guarantee that a student won't, uh, be removed from the class or will not be able to take the class because of, um, the ability to pay for it. So we're, we're pretty excited about those things. Couple other points of emphasis that I, I just think are interesting to, to bring up to you guys. Um, obviously, you know, um, coming up this year, we've got our Chromebook purchase. Down in the yellow there, in the bottom right-hand corner, it highlights, um, we try to be very data-driven. Our Chrome Savers is our class. Christie's the teacher of that class. Um, we get a huge amount of assistance from our, our library and specifically Carrie Lashinsky, the library assistant at the high school, operates a lot of the day-to-day of kids bringing their Chromebooks down when there's issues. Um, and a point that I think is kind of interesting, you know, we said they're basically three-year devices. That's what we were planning for. You can see there on damage claims across the, the top that we're halfway through the year basically right now. Um, we're just under two hundred claims that have been made out of our twelve hundred devices. This could range from anything from a key falling off to a broken screen. I mean, it's anything and everything that comes across our desk. Um, and the point that I, I'm very proud of and I know Carrie and Christie are very proud of, um, is out of that hundred and ninety-one, um, total repairs that we've done, um, a hundred and twenty-seven of them have been able to be done at zero cost. I mean, honestly, I, I would toot our own horn and tell you, this is, when I talk to other tech departments around, um, that's, they, it's pretty crazy what we're able to do and what we're able to pass on to the students to have a very low, um, financial impact. And that's honestly, it's through the work of Carrie and Christie and that, that they, they work very hard to make sure we're not, you know, we're trying to avoid charging kids if we, we can. Um, so those are the real big points of emphasis I wanted to bring up to you. I did throw on, just because I'm a very visual person, if you are a visual person on the backside, I threw on, and I, I talked to John and Amy, we're gonna combine kind of the safety update here for you as well, where things sit. Um, so on the backside, I just threw some pictures on. Um, and honestly, this kind of runs the, the gamut of everything that we've completed up until this point. We've got a couple of large safety projects that are still coming up with putting the, um, the, uh, shadowproof glass on the doors. Um, and Brent's kind of been running with that one. Obviously, they're still putting the secure vestibule entrance on the middle school that Brent and Steve have kind of been working on. Uh, but these are really the four big things that, uh, that you see on there. Secure entrances is obviously the, the main thing, especially throughout the day. Uh, the ability to monitor the doors. So that's a picture of, uh, the monitor. You can see there's one door that's open, um, in this picture at the elementary school. And I mentioned that the last board meeting has been a large concern, um, of, especially our, our housekeeping and custodial staff. It's very difficult with the amount of doors you have on a complex of our size to make sure we are truly secure. The system gives us the ability to do that in about two seconds instead of twenty minutes of walking around and checking everything. You can look at a monitor and you know, um, you know, the building is secure. Additionally, we've added a significant amount.
Okay, just on the door monitor, who's monitoring the doors?
So right now, the system is set up, uh, there's monitors in each of, going to be installed in each of the three offices. So what you're looking at basically is in each office.
Right.
For the office personnel and then, um, they just finalized this in the last couple of days. The system will be set up that it can send a, an email or a message. We've got a prop alarm on each of the doors. So right now during the day, I've got it as a little longer because you've got to allow the class to come and go in there. I've got it set at three minutes right now on most of the doors that if the door is propped open with a pencil or, uh, that it, it basically sends a message right now to custodial. Um, I've got it sent to me right now as well to notify the appropriate parties that hey, there's a, a door that's, that's being propped open. Again, our primary concern on that is during the school day to ensure that when kids are coming and going, they're not, if you've ever been to the high school, you know, that is a very common theme. I'm just gonna run it to my car, I'll drop a pencil in the door and, you know, and, and walk out and come back. So that's really what we're trying to mitigate during the day.
So we have staff that when, are either monitoring this or receiving a text or information and they're responding to check that door immediately.
Correct, so if, I'll give you an example, like the high school, the, the monitor goes off and says, um, you know, this door has been propped open for three and a half minutes. The process is the custodian gets the call, hey, can you go check door seventeen and, and, you know, see what's going on over there? That is something that obviously hasn't, we haven't had anything on that before, so, um, we're trying to feel out where the timeframe, what's an appropriate amount of time to allow the class to come and go if they're going outside in the springtime or whatever it might be. But right now, it's set at a couple of minutes to, to alert that something's going on. Intercoms, this has been a, a very large adjustment because people have been very used to coming and going freely through the buildings. This is probably the largest adjustment for parents and, and, um, you know, I dropped my kids off late. Well, now you, you can't just walk into the building. Um, it's probably the biggest, uh, improvement, I would say, um, but it's also the one that certainly is the biggest adjustment for people. So essentially, what you're looking at there, it's got a camera on it, it's got a button on it. You now have to buzz into all three buildings. So the doors are locked during the school day. If I show up because I have to drop my son's shoes off that he forgot, I'm pushing the button, I'm waiting for someone from the office to answer, um, have a conversation with them of what do you need, where are you here for? They get a visual of that person and then they decide whether or not it's appropriate to allow that person into the building, um, at all. So I mean, that's a, a pretty significant improvement from, uh, from where we were to start the school year. The camera update, upgrade I throw on there, um, last year, we completed a very large upgrade to digital cameras. Um, the part that I want to throw in there, just as something that I, I think is a big deal, maybe we don't, um, express to you guys enough, is the reusing and repurposing of equipment. So earlier this school year, we came to you, um, and requested two new servers. So we, out of our budget, approved two new servers, um, which is essentially the large backup for everybody, uh, here in the building. We took those servers and repurposed them as a camera server now. So we essentially turned what used to run the entire school now runs just the cameras, the old ones. Um, and the benefit there is we now have weeks worth of playback, which is a significant deal to our principals. Um, you'd like to think that people would report stuff right away, but that doesn't always happen. Hey, two weeks ago, this happened. Well, prior to this, the cameras didn't do you a whole lot of good. Um, so something that has been a nice thing, you know, is we're at three to four weeks right now being able to go back and, and, uh, look at stuff. So, that's kind of the, the rough update on everything. I'd be happy to take any questions if you guys have anything.
It's not necessarily a question, but just to respond to what you were asking about. Sometimes you wonder, is there any chatter going back and forth between the principals and the staff? And I know today, I think Katie, you were sending some messages out to some teachers on recess. Hey, we can't typically use the procedures that we've used in the past. Certain doors are going to be locked, you need to use the fingerprints to get back in. It's gonna take a little bit of time, but you've got principals basically working with their staff saying, hey, it's a different ballgame than it used to be. We're securing our doors, use the scanners and here are the doors that we can use. So we know this is happening, we know it's being used.
And I would liken it to, um, I'd say it's, it's like any organization or business. We had a very, we had a very lax security prior to the start of this school year. People could really come and go as, as they please. I would say the adjustment for staff is, um, when you get used to a certain way of doing things, you've been here for twenty years, you get used to it, this is always, I always come through this door, I always do this. Um, obviously, routines are thrown off and routines have to be adjusted on it. I said to some, some teachers as we were discussing it, um, picture if you were a brand-new teacher studying today and you knew no different, you would come into this and go, oh, well, this is just, this is the way it is. These are the six doors I can come and go on. Um, I think that's, that's the part for the staff that's the largest adjustment is now here. You know, you're limiting doors, they can come in, you're trying to really focus your traffic through a few key doors. All things that, when you talk to the safety experts that have come through and given tours, all things that are, are certainly recommended of, um, you know, trying to, to have an efficient run buildings.
So to reiterate, all the hand readers at all three buildings are active, correct?
Correct.
So then what happens during the evening if there's community activities and things like that? They are deactivated or certain ones?
So from, so our primary concern is obviously during the school day, um, afternoon, I, right when the, the bell rings at three twelve or three fifteen at the different buildings, the scanners activate, the doors open themselves. Um, so they're on a lock schedule right now where before they had to be keyed open. The doors at all three buildings are open until nine o'clock because there's basketball, there's hockey, you know, there's just stuff going on everywhere in our buildings. Um, and then at nine o'clock, the doors lock themselves, uh, and, and are locked for the evening then.
Okay, and then in, in regards to the intercoms, so that's an effective off three buildings as well?
Correct.
Okay, cause, and, and when did that go into effect?
Um, it was, I would say finalized about two hours ago.
Oh, okay. So has there been communication of parents?
So yesterday, I finished shooting, I, all three of the principals are gonna be famous. Yesterday, I finished shooting, uh, forty-five second video of each of them, um, in their building, explaining it of, here's the process to it. Um, I uploaded them to YouTube today and they're processing right now to, to go out. And the plan is, um, once those get processed, I'm sure they're honestly probably done processing now, um, we'll send that out through Facebook and we'll send a Skype message out to each building um, to notify them that this is, this is now the way you get into the buildings if you need to, to, uh, access it. I avoided sending it out even though it's been operational since probably Monday, um, Friday of last week in the, in, in two of the buildings. Um, because I wanted to make sure we had all the, the bugs worked out before we sent out, you know, uh, two thousand parents. I call it a soft opening, I wanted to make sure it worked with the, the few that came through.
And Brady, with that, how many of the, um, the, the, um, fingerprint reader at each school?
So there'd be fifteen total readers.
So then what you're saying is, is at any point, if you're in the system, any person that is printed can get in any of those?
Nope, so I had to disseminate out between who the person is and give them access based on their job, based on the building they work at. So some people, yes, have access to all three buildings depending on their job. Um, teachers have twenty-four seven access to their building. And then one of the nice things we were able to do, um, is because, you know, we truly are that community-based school and you've got the elementary school coming over constantly for concerts and swimming, that's always been a point of frustration for the teachers coming over is they've gotta then get access to it. So for example, I gave the elementary school teachers access during the day to get into the high school, middle school because they're bringing their students over. Coaches have a different access schedule. Each group has a different access schedule. The pool patrons, all the pool patrons are fingerprinted. They have their own access schedule. So I have them all separated out depending on what their, you know, what their job is and what they, what they need access to.
What is ours, Ken?
24, you guys have 24/7 access.
I just want you to know it worked even though I don't remember which finger.
Index is the most common.
I'm pretty sure we didn't do the middle finger, so I tried index.
Some people, it's the middle, some it's the thumb, but index is.
So you just keep your words, you know, in your words, I can't remember.
Yeah, index, I think is, that was the 95% for people was index.
Oh, okay. And like, with all the teachers you're giving, you know, there's certain access to and this and that. So you know who's going in there.
Yes.
Not like you can sneak in there and you're somebody else.
Correct. I mean, that honestly is the reason we went with this system versus, the system does work. So the question that's come up, what if my fingerprints don't work? We do have people whose fingerprints don't work. The system also reads cards, no different than you got at most, that's what most businesses operate on. Obviously, the concern with cards and the reason we didn't go with cards alone is cards can be passed around and given around to anyone.
You can lose them and somebody can.
Yeah, and I'm gonna hope you can't, you know, lose your finger that easily, obviously, so.
And you have a backup plan in place for like a power outage?
Yeah, so what Steve went through with his custodial crew is they just finished the high school, middle school, they broke off keys in all the locks. And then they have set up key doors, three or four at each building, that they completely rekeyed and there's only 35 keys right now made for that. So I won't tell you the scary number of how many keys were out in the system. We only have, we had, I'll say this, we have less employees than we had keys that were out for the buildings before this. So 30 keys have been made and really the goal is in case of a catastrophic power outage that you could still get people in and out of the building.
Do, do we have some methodology, whether it be DOCS box or something, or fire and law enforcement to get a building?
Yeah, so the, those boxes are, Steve put a new key in to those fire boxes on the outside of buildings. And then I fingerprinted the police. They're really excited about that. That's been a concern when Officer Crowsey's had an issue, somebody's had to stand by the door and allow the responding officers entry. I think I've got three of them done and Officer Crowsey and I have to set up the remaining officers. But the thought is that they now have the ability to gain access when, you know, when they need to. Fire department, Mr. Enchman asked and they would prefer to continue to use the boxes. So that's what they, that's what they're used to everywhere else they go, so.
Great. Sounds like you guys have done a good job. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Great presentation.
Okay, item eight, student board work. Okay, but everybody received it in their background information, so you should all have that. So we will move on to item nine, oh, business discussion and possible decision for committee meetings.
Well, we had, I think, just a small discussion on whether we wanted to dissolve the groups and meet, I think, a half an hour or early and just kind of do it all as one board or if we wanted to keep. And we had to have the, we all have the policy for that. So I guess with this meeting earlier at 5:30, do we want to dissolve the groups or just keep them as they are and meet at 5:30 and have our meetings start at 6:00?
Well, I think the goal to combine those meetings into the regular board meeting was, was it to try to cut back on time? I don't see that being a time saver plan on this thing. I just, I think it's just gonna make the meet, our meeting longer. But that's just gonna be good.
Yeah, from an administrative perspective, we talked about this a lot. I felt like the process that you're currently having seems to be working rather well. In other words, we have some people that are speaking to personnel today, all other people are speaking to finance, other people are speaking to grounds. It seems like there's a trust factor then when these committees come back to the board. So in terms of time, it seems like the way we've built this setup really expirates the regular board meetings perhaps working better than you're suggesting. As opposed to having 30 minutes of discussion about personnel, 30 minutes of discussion about finance, 30 minutes of discussion about building grounds. So from our perspective, if you're comfortable coming at 5:30 administratively, we see this as something that has worked well. At least that's the feedback I'm getting from administrators. The only issue that we'd like you to think about down the road, Julie's not here today, but a few, I don't know how long ago, it was decided that curriculum and standards would be done on Alternative Monday. And it just seems like the turnout for those meetings hasn't been as I expected. And she, if Julie was here, she'd ask you to think about, could we also schedule curriculum and standards on the same night as the board meeting? That one might have to start a little bit earlier. That one has a little more time to be prepared by the term. And again, it's not a decision we have to make tonight, but if you continue to go ahead with committee meetings the same way they're showing up right now, would you at least consider having curriculum and standards that same night? I know we're moving back a little bit. Steve and I have talked about building grounds and perhaps there won't be meetings every single night of those meetings. Administratively, we're here to do what you want. We think the system that you have in place works well.